Invite all of you to stand with us and let's begin with a word of prayer and I will call on Commissioner McGahey. Open the meeting with prayer and then let's remain standing for the pledge.
Good Lord, thank you for this day and your love for us. Thank you for this time. We have to come together to be about the county's business. So give us the wisdom and the knowledge to, to act upon these issues the best of our ability. And bless each one of us throughout the rest of the day and be with us and guide us in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Join us for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You seated.
We welcome you here. Thank you for your interest in the business of the county. Uh, we have no scheduled public hearings, no scheduled comment from citizens, no awards and presentations. But we do have opportunity for other elected officials or appointed officials to share, comment, uh, share if you have something at this time or?
Actually I do, I'd like to.
That'd be great. Come forward, yeah. Glad to have you here today.
I want to encourage all of our citizens to have a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend. Not only is it Memorial Day, but many young adults will also be graduating from school. Traffic is going to be heavy at the best. Uh, let's take our time and get to our destination. Tune out for a bit, enjoy time with your family. Cell phones are a great tool for communication, but they are not intended for use while operating a vehicle. Before you leave on your trip, check your vehicle. Top off fluids, check your air pressure in your tires and fix any shortcomings, especially those that involve safety. If you find yourself in a predicament where you are impaired, call for a ride. Be safe and cautious. If you are a young driver, ensure that you have someone with you that has experience and can help you focus on driving. Sometimes the longest route can be the most interesting route. Enjoy your countryside and take the road less traveled. The Covington County Sheriff's Office will be out in full effect on Memorial Day holiday weekend to ensure traveling is safe and we can assist our motorists. So please, I ask that everyone observe traffic laws, wear your seatbelt and then slow down. Uh, the life that you save will be your own.
Thank you. Thank you. Good advice. Commissioners, you received minutes for the May the eleventh meeting through your email. I'm sure you've reviewed those. Did any of you have a correction or change that you'd like to note? Or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alright, there's a motion. Second?
Second.
Nobody else had a correction to note? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Alright, that's approved. We carried nothing forward under old business for this meeting, so we'll move on to new business. Consider approval to solicit annual bids for asphalt and then after that, uh, bids for surface treatment. And so we're going to recognize our county engineer, Lynn Rawls. Lynn, ask you if you will come forward and kind of work with us through these next two or three items on the agenda.
Okay, I had mentioned in the past about the, uh, asphalt bid and we're, we have the, the bid package together, I think. Karen and Rachel have those, um, Ron got those prepared and got those to us yesterday. Um, and what this is, um, again with the, the Rebuild Alabama Act, um, they made it pretty simple in the fact that it'll cover both the public works and the bid law by advertising on, on this one webpage. So, uh, and this will be up, up for a year and this will actually cover our rebuild projects as well. Our resurfacing projects that we have, um, Go Million Road and Beaver Down Road is this year. And also, um, um, Strong School. I think we're going to have the funds hopefully to do our, that part of our transportation plan for this fiscal year. Uh, with that, but I'd like to just request us to, to get that on the website so we can get that to bid because we do have those projects coming up in a letting pretty, pretty soon. And we need to get those on the site.
And if you have a smaller project for, for resurfacing that pops up during the year, you're able to use this for that as well?
Yes, it's an annual bid. It is an annual bid and we can also use this, um, you know, the, the rebuild, um, Alabama Act. You know, fifty percent has to be let to contract, but the other half, the other part can be done with the county forces or in, in-house with that, with those funds. So, but I needed, um, and really, um, A and B are actually together. It's all one. We have ranges, um, for the asphalt bid. It's based on, on tonnage.
Okay.
Um, and on the surface, uh, treatment, it's based on square yard. We have a, a, like a, a mile or, or, or less and then a mile like one to five miles and more than five or so, um, on that, on.
Are those a combined package or are they separate packages?
It's still, it's one package.
Okay, so, so we need a motion to approve solicitation of bids for asphalt and for surface treatment.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, second? Moved and seconded to, uh, solicit these bids. Anybody have questions? Full in on that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Alright, that's approved. Next?
Uh, the next is to consider purchase of vehicles for the, uh, for our office and, uh, this is for, uh, two small dump trucks, our, um, road crews. The two that we have are, are well outdated and, and we're, we're starting to spend more money on them really what they were. So we need, we're going to surplus those later. Once we get these, uh, these new trucks in, if y'all.
Do you know what the delivery time is on these smaller dumps at this time?
NJPA, uh, um, these trucks are kind of a, I'm not going to say especially kind of, these, these trucks are readily available. And they're basically the same, same vehicle. They're MB sevens, um, and they're, they're MAC, small dump trucks, like a ten, ten yard dumps what these are. We haul our backhoes with these type trucks and we need two of those to replace the two in our fleet. Um, but also they have a third truck, which will actually be our, our fuel truck or our service truck that does our greasing and, and maintenance on our county, uh, equipment. Um, like I said, the price range, these are roughly ninety-five thousand dollars a piece for the, uh, the dumps and, and the ten yard dumps and the, um, the MAC depending what options we get, whether we go to get the thing fully loaded or take what we have off hours can vary. Um, still rough about, um, eighty-eight if it's a flat bed and toolboxes and anywhere from ninety-five to hundred thousand with the fuel tank and hydraulic tank and all that kind of stuff on it.
So three, three vehicles and alright.
And this, this is off our Sourcewell bid. This is a, a joint national bid that we can just order directly off of. We just need to get a purchase order and, and make that, um, purchase. So I request we get approval to, to purchase those vehicles.
Do you expect to finance these trucks or are you going to pay them out of budget?
Yes, but we have it budgeted.
Okay.
So we'll pay directly out of pocket and, and do part of this, um, is we know we had several new, uh, forming trucks ordered. Um, but with the chip issues we have, they're not guaranteed to even get them. So we actually canceled that order. Because by the time they actually get in, well, they'll be a new year model, um, in for those trucks. We had to basically just cancel that order.
Okay. You're going to come back on those this coming year or whatever. Okay. Anybody have questions on this before we consider a motion and everybody clear on what he's attempting to do, which is purchases under current budget? Uh, is there a motion to grant the authority to order these three noted vehicles?
Make a motion. Grant.
Second.
Motion and second, anybody?
I'll second.
Any, or you'll second. Do we have, anybody have a question? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Alright, that's approved. Next item.
Alright, next item. There's one's not on this list, but we need to, to, to add it. Um, we have some for our older, um, I'll take care of the first one. We do, we do have on this is the, uh, we're looking to, to purchase another, um, pan, um, like we already have, like a six thirteen C, uh, caterpillar, uh, paddle wheel pan. Uh, we use this to, to work our dirt roads up. It works in town with the, the, uh, motor grater. We pull our ditches, pick material up, build the road back up. This, we're working on standwood, um, and George Mams Road right now with that. Um, and you can see what we're doing with that. Um, we just finished that. We're actually working on, uh, Messick Loop and Houston Crawson's today as well by doing the same thing to those roads. Um, it's a, it's a, actually a plus, um, a pan can, um, replaces basically a dump truck and a loader. It transports easily up down the dirt road. So it's, it's, it's one man versus two, uh, two men and two, uh, and additional piece of equipment. So I request, uh, we found, um, there's several on the internet, but we need to get permission to advertise to be able to put a spec out on what we're looking for. Um, to actually bid on this.
This is not replacing this as an addition.
Is one we got usable?
Oh no, we're using it right now. We're sending another one.
I mean, is it, was it working or is it, will it hold up, continue on?
Do ya, yeah.
We just have one.
We just have, just the one. We used to have four.
You used to have four.
Yeah, they were down to just one.
Because like he said, they've been up on standwood and Georgia.
About a week and a half.
And they've done.
It makes a huge difference on the, on the rebuild of a road.
She's estimating approximately seventy-five thousand on this cost, give or take.
Yes.
And again, that's a budgeted item.
And our expenditures, uh, for the year are what we had budgeted. We had, um, I got my printout from the budget right here. We had roughly, uh, six hundred eighty thousand dollars budgeted and we spent the hundred and forty, uh, for the, uh, um, motor graders that we have leased. Um, at least about five hundred and forty thousand left with that. Um, but this was not one of the items. We had several. I had a skid steer, a paint truck, um, a water blaster, um, mini X and things of that nature. Um, but, but this would be a, an addition, a bid would be an addition to our fleet though.
Okay. So you've heard the request to, uh, grant authority to bid, request bids on, uh, a pan. A used pan. The proposal here is estimating twenty-five hundred or so hours on it and that'll get a price in the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Lynn, may I also add, uh, y'all had a request for a tractor as well?
Yeah, I was fixing to.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you didn't forget that.
Okay, is there a motion to grant this authority, request bid?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Anybody have additional questions on this item? Comment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Motion gives. Okay. Lynn, what else?
Uh, like I said, this was on the agenda. This, this was not, like Karen said, we're looking at maybe getting two tractors. Um, um, to replace them that we have in our fleet. Um, we're looking at a, uh, two John Deere sixty-one oh five M's and they range from about forty-eight to fifty-five thousand dollars. This is off the state surplus yard when they come available. Um, and they generally have less than two thousand hours on them when we get these, uh, these tractors. It's, it's a pretty good deal.
Is that similar to what we have now?
Yes.
Four-wheel drive?
Yes.
Are you going to replace two or just additional?
Well, we need, well, I should probably replace two and, uh, and get, and get two more new ones in, so.
So on the items that we're replacing, when we get the replacement items in, you're going to bring the other in and, and surplus it?
Yes, we may keep one, may keep one, but one just as a backup, um, possibly. Uh, but this will be, this like it's covered under the budget this year, so no, no borrowing of money to.
This, this is not replacing the two you just recently bought.
No, sure. It's two, two old ones that we, that we have.
I'll be over there. I'll make a motion.
And while, before we make that motion, can I, before we get a second on that, can I also maybe, uh, possible two new, um, woods? We have Alamo mowers that we're running right now and they're lower profile, nothing against Alamo, they're, they're great, um, bushhogs. But with the woods, it can literally pick up as high as where you're sitting on the, the tabletop right there. So when we come over driveways, we're not scuffing people's drives and, and, and cutting, um, ruts into their, their, their hillsides. Um, with it. The, the woods is a, is a superior mower in my opinion. And, uh, wouldn't mind possibly getting two of those. They're about, they're about thirty grand a piece on those.
You got that budgeted too?
Yes, we, we have a hundred thousand in our budget, um, for, um, right away equipment.
And that comes off of the state bid as well?
Uh, yeah, that is, that's off the state bid, yes. The Coblenz has the, the bid on those.
Okay.
Yes, that's off the ACCA.
So one is, uh, so the cutters are on ACCA bid.
Yes.
Uh, the.
Tractor be state surplus.
State surplus.
Yes.
All at one time.
I'll make that motion still.
What was your motion getting? No, I'm just joking. What we got?
For the tractors and the cutters.
From two different places. Alright, well, two different procedures. Alright, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I said.
Any more questions on that? I know this is spending a lot of money, but again, it was budgeted and planned at the beginning of the year. We're just getting to the point now where it's time to move forward. Are we clear on that?
It is, but like those tractors, I know what they cost and that's nearly half.
About a hundred seven, a hundred to seven, hundred, eight thousand do you, roughly?
Yeah, I'll take a couple if they got a couple later.
I wish I could get on that state bid.
Yeah.
Okay. So a motion and second. If there's nothing else, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Alright, that's, that's approved. Uh, I think the next item comes under you as well. Uh, award bids for local lime base. You want to lead us in that conversation or tell us what the bids came in like?
I think we just received one. I believe it went up fifty cent a ton. Um, and I, I just, um, request we go and approve that. We need to get the rock. We've been, um, having to hold up. Uh, we haven't been able to Birmingham get a local source, a source and it's expensive to go up there because of that. Um, but we need to go ahead and get approval. I got twenty loads on the ground there waiting on us now. If we could, uh, get approval to go and get that material.
What about, this is all from CRP. Did we get anything from Stovall?
Yes, on the bid. And they were sent out to Stovall and, uh, and we put it out as per the FEMA, um, bid of what we have to do to get it out. So that way any, um, minority, um, owned business, whatever could bid on it as well. So. But that's on the bid we got.
I'm just thinking about the hauling on the south end of the county if we were able to buy it.
Right. Used to when, when Stovall did that, we had a typically, there I, um, I developed a, um, haul route, basically based on a haul route and where the line would be. And from Stovall's, it was basically from, um, the bridge on Yellow River there on the count of four. And it followed basically the, the river up to the very northeast part of the county. So basically a, a third way, the way it worked out. Most of the, I think when Stovall and the rest of it went to the north. Um, but, uh, that's where we are. We just got the one bid, so.
So the bid is from CRP Logging Inc. And the price is run, run from eleven fifty a ton to twenty-four dollars a ton depending on the, the size of the rock?
Yes, and I think that the, uh, the rip route, I think it was, it was the higher item. I think it dropped actually two dollars a ton. I think it dropped two dollars a ton.
This is, this is loaded price when our, when our truck gets.
I just pick up, I just pick up at, at, at plant.
Okay. Alright, is there a motion to award this bid to Haight?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion. There's a second. Anybody have any additional questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Okay. So awarded.
I mean, they, those prices are still pretty much close to where we're at. So I mean, not a definite increase. So that, that was a good thing, I think.
And I just signed the, uh, the FEMA off the hurricane satellite. Just signed all the, the PWs, I guess you could say, on our grant spoil yesterday. Um, so that process is going to start taking place there. There's a lot of rock and a lot of dirt, um, set up for that, that event that we had.
Do you know how, how many dollars worth of?
I haven't actually put a total, a total to it yet. A lot of numbers.
Bring that to us for the next meeting maybe?
Yeah, I can kind of give you an idea, yeah. Now we had a, a, a firm number on our, on that. Now the dirt, um, and something we didn't look forward in, in the future, um, dirt pits are, are a hard thing to come by. Right now, we're having to haul a long way, uh, for, because of that. And I, I would like for the county to, to pursue possibly, um, either, either purchasing some land more central located in the county that would actually have. This is just, I know I'm not mentioning it to you guys, but I would, um, I think in the long run, I think that will probably benefit the county probably more than, than, uh, anything as far as, uh, um, because our haul, we're having to haul literally from over toward Op, over there now, pretty much for the whole county.
Tony happened to mention a, a piece of property that he thought might provide some, a good source for dirt. Today we were talking a little bit and.
Yeah, I was, we just didn't find, and it's hard for a landowner. It's, it's expensive for the permitting process. Um, they got so a lot of dirt just to cover the, 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 the fee.
Do we go through the same permit process if it's our property, it's just an ADM?
Yes, we do.
Procedure. Is there anybody else other than ADM involved in permitting?
Uh, your industrial, um, Alabama Department of Industrial Relations is involved.
Okay.
And that deals with the excise, excise tax. And you'll see them, they'll literally get behind a dump truck and follow it to a pit. Um, they, we've had phone calls before. Matter of fact, in one of our vehicles, um, they pulled into the pit and they're looking for, uh, tax collection basically on, on the, on the minerals, uh, for that. But they're, but they're partnered in industrial relations. But they stay out of all, um, state, local government and municipalities. Any project related to those, if they're not involved, it's just more on the private end that they're, they're involved in.
What, Tony, you were talking about that today. What if we, what if we consider granting Lynn and Tony the authority to, to talk to, uh, a couple of potential, uh, sellers, uh, just to see what the market is and come back with a thought on that? You know, willing to pursue that?
I haven't looked at how much dirt, well, how much money we spent on dirt here, but it's a lot.
It is a lot.
Um, and with this, with these FEMA events, it's, it's going to be a lot as well, so.
Which I think may be a good idea to go ahead and s- and pursue what's out there, see where we are, what our options are.
Well, we could look at the, what the graph that shows different soils and.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've located, I mean, I've looked at a few, I mean, I've, I've kind of identified a few myself. And I'm very, um, um, excited about, um, I was, I was at the meeting in Gulf Shores, Orange Beach here two weeks ago and the state, um, and it's something I've been waiting to see for a long time. A lot of the counties had done it. And Covington County had already been done. They, they had to come back and do a little re, re fly, um, flying again here. But the LiDAR, the light detection radar, we have more of a precise topographic map now for the whole county. We're like, we're talking like a foot accuracy versus a ten foot accuracy. So I can look at a piece of property and actually generate, uh, and know how much dirt we can actually get on a piece of property versus instead of just pulling from our hip and just kind of guessing.
And that's available, uh, grants, no charge?
No, no charge.
Okay, just have the software to.
Just available. Uh, it's on the, uh, you can get to it by the web soil survey or by the National, um, uh, Geospatial Data Gateway page.
Okay.
And go through that and actually go through there and actually, it's, it's, you download tiles and, uh, you, you can actually generate from those point clouds, you can actually generate your contour based off of that. So it's good, good technology.
So I suggest a motion to, uh, grant, uh, Commissioner Holmes and, uh, Lynn Rawls the authority to pursue options on, on potential dirt pits.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Anybody else have thoughts on that or just see what they come back with? I can give them something to do in their spare time.
Come back with a deal, guys.
Yeah. Alright, uh, there's a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Alright, thank you Lynn. What else?
Uh, the last thing I have and it's a big one that we need to give careful consideration to, um, is, um, our installations of, of driveways for citizens in the county. It is a, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a burden. I would say it's a burden for my office. Um, matter of fact, as of this morning, before I came here, we had twenty-five new work orders for driveways this month. And just what a few little minutes we sat in there, Mayor Betts just took two more. So we now have twenty-seven new driveway pipes that we're putting in with the county. This requires, um, roughly about sixteen percent of my workforce is, is putting in driveways. And I don't know what the solution is and I won't eat, we will, I don't think we need to discuss that today, but we need to start looking into maybe doing something different on what avenues we're going to pursue, but we need to look at something different. Um, um, I got a lot of shoulder work that needs to be done that goes by the wayside. And I said by the wayside, but we work on it when we can, but when people are, are needing a, a, a driveway put in for a mobile home to be delivered, you have to kind of take care of those. Um, we have a lot of maintenance, a lot of our ditches, a lot of three R work that we can't get to, uh, that we have to generate. Actually, we got to get in work to get, to get our three R funds, um, um, for our, like, like clipping shoulders and things of that nature. Um, you know, paint striping, all roads need paint striping. Um, I don't really have a crew right now even let loose to even start that. Um, there's a lot of things that could be done if we were to alleviate some of the burden that we have with these driveway pipes.
So based on this month's activity, what you just mentioned, the orders, it's, uh, one a day. So you're looking at three hundred and fifty pipes in a year.
Yes.
Based on today's activity, three hundred and fifty pipes.
And I'm blessed, we're, you know, we're blessed to have people move to our county. I'm, I'm thankful for that, but, um, it is a, it, there's a lot of other work that needs to be done for the general public. You know, driveway pipes are more for an individual, not, they're not, they're not citizens of the county. But when you start looking at travelways and things that need to be done, um, a lot of our time is spent just putting in these driveway pipes. I know other counties, I know Pike County and Ballin County, I know the contractors put those in for them in those counties. That might be an option we have, but we just need to really take consideration on that and just put it on your radar to, to know what we can, can do.
Well, you, you've mentioned this, uh, in the past, probably three or four years ago, it was brought up as a possibility. And again, we, we've had this kind of, uh, to the side discussion, I know I have with you. Uh, you know, it's, it's something commissioners that you, you know, I don't think any of us want to do, but it's something that we, we're facing that we need to take action on. We need to consider. The impact on, uh, road bridge crews and their ability to deliver services are priority number one should be safety.
That's why I was going to say, right now it's kind of a safety issue because Lynn don't have the people to go out and fix this shoulder, this deep on the side of the road. Striping because this crew is tied up doing these pipes.
And I do thank y'all for our, my manning chart. You know, we have roughly fifty. A lot of counties only have twenty and thirty people. But they don't have near the infrastructure that we have here in this county either. Um, nothing against our, our surrounding counties, but we have a lot of infrastructure.
We do have.
Versus a lot of other counties, so.
Do you still, do you still have a full-time bridge crew?
Yes.
Okay.
But that bridge crew is also my concrete crew. It's my part-time, um, bushhawk crew. Um, they, they do, they do a lot of than, than just build bridges.
Okay.
Um, so.
And also, we would continue to maintain all driveways in the county.
Yes. If we go with a contract by letting the contractor put them in, then that would be a, be an option. Um, and, uh, we would maintain it like we always do. Um, any general maintenance on a driveway, it's just a new installation. It's where it's killing us, um, on our work crews. Cause I mean, um, you can come by and watch our yard. There's pipe leaves this yard every morning. Four to six, I mean, there's a lot of pipe leaves here every day.
You have an estimated cost for, you know.
I think the average drive retail would, um, be anywhere from probably, um, two to six thousand dollars.
What's it costing us?
Um, our crews, um.
Just roughly?
Uh, about ten thousand a week. If I got two crews putting in pipe, that's what our, our cost is.
Put in one every day, ten thousand a week, estimate.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if we did go with contractors, you would set specifications and guidelines for them to go by? You'd still size the pipe?
We still size a pipe and, uh, it'd be, uh, we'd look, and there's different options and there's different things we can do. We can either add additional people to the payroll, which is expensive. Um, or we can, uh, like I say, uh, Pike County, um, would be the model if we went with the contracted route. Um, they have a permit process. They get, they got a, a standard specification for the driveway. What, what it's supposed to look like, what it's supposed to be capped with, compaction, things of that nature. Um, and, uh, and from that we could get the pipe size, make sure it's not a sight distance issue where they want to put a driveway. We would do things as normal. Um, and then possibly even let the, uh, um, we could still order the pipe here. I think a lot of times with our annual bid, with our, our plastic pipe, right now with the cost of materials, um, you know, uh, a lot of these vendors, when they bid on annual bid, they, they anticipate these numbers. So a lot of time we have a higher price than, than local vendors. We got four or five vendors here that actually supply the pipe as well, if we want to get out of actually selling the pipe and let a local vendor handle the, the, the pipe, um, as well. So there's just different options and I'll try to bring all those to the table.
The, uh, the county doesn't do private work. The reason that we do driveway pipe is it's, is, it's on the right of way. And we need to control that right of way. So we drop it in the current, the current policy is that the landowner pays the cost, reimburses our cost of the pipe. And then we incur the additional cost associated with dressing it and getting it, um, to grade. And then we maintain it from then on. So as that pipe breaks or wash, or rust out.
We replace it.
We replace it at our cost. So it's a, it is a longstanding practice that has, it has a lot of cost associated within Lynn's trying to e- either find a way to assess that our cost to the landowner, the total cost. Or to, uh, get out of it completely, other than the inspection part of it and the sizing part.
It's just on new installation. I'm not talking about, like, so we'll still put, the gravel later on if it needs it or whatever, or, or, you know, if it needs a little bit of work, clean it out. We'll still do that. It's just because for new installations, all I'm trying to alleviate off our, off our workload.
Hypothetically speaking, if it were to, something happened to it and it had to be replaced by no fault of the landowner or anything?
We replace it no charge.
We would, I'm not talking about right now, in.
In the future.
In the future.
Yeah, we replace it no charge.
We would replace it.
We, any, like I said, we're getting rid of a lot of our old corrugated metal pipe, a lot of those rusting out. We, any, like I said, we're getting rid of a lot of our old corrugated metal pipe, a lot of those rusting out, um, or broken concrete, those get replaced with new, um, with new pipe. Now, the only, uh, the additional cost the owner may incur, if it is twenty-four foot, what most of the old driveways were, I, I put a standard thirty-foot piece of pipe in now. And they would pay just for the cost of that additional cost of that, that pipe, um, and that's, that's it. If a new pipe has to be, if a, if an old pipe has to be replaced, they just pay for that difference. If it's thirty foot already there, there's no charge for that, so.
I was kind of leading to, if we went contractor, contractor put one in, two years down the road, something happens, it crushes in or whatever, we're still gonna take the burden of.
Yeah, we'll, and we'll take that on, yes.
Okay.
But by the specification, we will check that, you know, and keep a check on, on the, on the, on the quality of work on that.
Sure.
So.
Anybody else have comments on this, uh, so you're not, you're not ready to propose, uh, what we do today, you're just putting it on the radar maybe for the next meeting?
My main concern is my men's time, and, and I can say, I know it's, money is very important, but my men's time is already budgeted. What I do with my men's time is more important to me than, than a lot, there's a lot of other things that's more important that I think that needs to be addressed. And that's the reason I want to maybe get away from, from this, this burden.
So for you up to crews, to do some of these others?
I mean, I could start my paint crew, I could get a paint crew with that, with those, I could bust that crew up and get a, a, a paint crew started, um. Our bridges need a lot of, um, maintenance, um, there's just a lot of different things we could be doing that, those crews. We could paint every day of the week, um, pretty much.
So does anybody want to take action on, uh, what he's presenting to us today, or you're comfortable to wait until the next meeting or two? Uh, have a chance to talk after the media mentions this or whatever, have a chance to talk to folks in the community, or what are your thoughts?
I think right now, like you said, we, just kind of preliminary, just, just see what, see what can be done, kind of avenues that we can look at that would be options that we could look, you know, adopt or do. Right now, we really don't know which would be the, the most cost-effective or the best for us or everybody. So I think just let him have some leeway to come back to us and give his proposals on what he thought would be the best for the situation.
Your contractors, would be licensed contractors within the county?
We'd have to look into that, I gotta say, I'd look and see exactly who they use in, in Pike, like some using Arizona Mall, that, they said it work, it's working great for them.
Right.
Um, but, uh, but, you know, my, my main thing is, you know, uh, you know, you can imagine what two crews, two, uh, four-man crews can do other than, um, a driveway installation, there's a lot of right-of-ways, I mean, everybody agreed our right-of-ways need, um, maintenance. Our digits need maintenance, shoulders need maintenance, um, paint needs to be on the road, there's a lot of, those eight men could be utilized in a, in a a really eff- efficient manner to, to what they, they need to be doing.
Well, you know, you go back to the, the dirt pits and all that, and you've got a driveway pipe you're putting in in the south part of the county. And they're waiting on dirt, if they have to go up there to get it. And they got to run two trucks or whatever, and they got to wait on it, and there's a lot of idle time there waiting for materials.
That's right.
That, just has to be, you know, you just have, there's, that's just what it is, you can't, you just got to wait.
Right.
And so I, I see that in all different areas when they're putting in pipe, you know, some of them say, well, they're just sitting around, well, they've got to wait on that. They got to finish that, they can't leave that site till they get through, to go to another site, but they got to get it done, so it just, it's just a time factor of that too as well.
So you, uh, the, what I'm hearing, I think the consensus is to bring this back so in the next thirty days, either the next meeting or the second meeting from now on, let's, uh.
I'd just like to move on it, one way or the other, because it's, it's, it's a bur, it's a burden to my, to my department, I'm not gonna lie about it.
Bring a proposal for us to consider, if you don't mind.
Have one on each hand, one, what it would cost to increase his crews for the county to continue maintaining, and one, what it would be like to have just the contractors.
How many, roughly, you may or may not can answer this question, how many people do we have that does this kind of work inside the community that we?
Oh, there's, um, there's several of those, there'd be several in the county.
I think Chairman brought up a good point earlier about just take mine, for example, I've got on the back of my own, and being able to put my own pipe in. As long as we've done it to, to your specification, and I think that's something that we'd have to look at with it too. But yeah, I think, I think bringing it back to us in the next meeting or the next would be, uh, give us an opportunity to, to look a little more into it.
Yep, all right, what else Lynn?
That's all I got.
Y'all remind me, don't bring him to the podium, it's expensive, so, thank you.
Uh, just an update, I'll give, just kind of give an update on some of our projects in the county real quick, um, I was driving a pile down our Falcon North Bridge, we started that, that project yesterday. Um, um, we're continuing our bush hogging and spraying, our bush hogging is, that I'm letting our guys work basically till dark on bush hogging, trying to get caught up on that. Spraying and letting a guy work on spraying through, uh, he's working Fridays, trying to get caught up. Our motivators are actually working Friday and Saturdays where I can get, get them to, to work, um, and most of them are, a lot of them are. Um, that's where we're still on basically our general maintenance of, of the county, our one oh seven project. I've, I, I'm in correspondence now with Fish and Wildlife Services right now, so we're getting real close with that, that final, uh, paperwork on that, on that deal. Um, I actually spoke with him, the guy, yesterday, so we're, we're, we're getting, getting closer. Um, and, uh, we're through with our Canada eighty-five job is now complete, they, they put the final stop bars down yesterday. They chip sealed our Canada eighty-nine project, um, over on, uh, Canada eighty-nine near the, um, Geneva or Coffee County line over there in the Beadle Community, and like I say, as soon as we get approval for the, uh, advertisement for the asphalt bids, we can go ahead and, um, when the project is lit, um, we can go in, just issue a work order for those, for those projects on that. Our, uh, East Triple R, I kind of got backwards on that, our, we're wait, we're gonna, we're gonna let the, the Gomayen and, and and the Beaver Dam Road as a, as more of a work order, purchase order as with, with this new, um, annual bid when we get it back. And then the, uh, East Triple R Projects, three, um, sites we have for guard rail for unshielded, um, culverts and bridges. Uh, that'd be a Ju- June, um, here pretty soon, I think in a, in a, in a June.
Does that come through us or through state?
It comes, it goes to the state on, on the East Triple R, so.
So when are we, I had somebody ask me that the other day, when are we talking about these may be resurfaced now, what?
Which ones, Mr. Tony?
Well, like Gomayen or Lott.
Uh, it probably next two, 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 two to three months, at, at the latest on those projects.
And you had mentioned Strong School Road, how far are you gonna go from twenty-nine to the county line or the stop point?
Depending on how the bid comes in, but I hope to go from, um, basically twenty-nine all the way to, uh, um, uh, Dunce Bridge Road, or at least to, uh, um, Barefoot Road. At least that far, depending on how the, the prices coming in. Like I said, we're gonna, we'll widen that one, that one to twenty-two feet wide, we'll widen, level it, and probably put a service trip on that to cut down our, our, our costs, because like I tell people, you know, you know, we, we fall short eight million dollars a year, and I do all I can, and I try to do the best I can with our county, county funds that we have available to get as far as we can. So, but, uh, that's where we are, so.
All right, anybody have questions? Thank you Lynn, appreciate the good work you and your folks do. Uh, next, uh, we have two or three items under the Sheriff's Department, uh, Sheriff, you're welcome to come to the podium if you promise not to spend any money like Lynn did, but the first item on the agenda is award bids on vehicles for your office and also for appraisal office, and, uh, you won't care to tell us what that is or you get on, on those?
I, I, I understand what.
Tell us, tell us what yours were, let's go.
We, we requested the purchase of two new, two new Chevrolet Tahos, we got a bid request, uh, and is it JM Jackson?
JM Jackson was the low bidder.
JM Jackson was the low bidder, uh, we want to move forward with it.
Okay. Okay, all right, so, uh, I'll just handle them department by department, so the, uh,
Okay.
The Sheriff's Vehicles, uh, two Chevy, twenty twenty-one Chevy Tahos, one is thirty-four thousand nine eighty, the other is thirty-four thousand five seventy-five. And those were, those were bids that we had approved requesting, so we need to, we need a motion to award to the low bidder.
I made a move.
Uh, let me, let me change that.
Okay.
The bidders, the, the original, there were two bidders, Don, Donahue was the thirty-four nine eighty, I'm sorry, and then, but the price we're paying is the JM Jackson, thirty-four, five seventy-five, fifty. I, I made it look like two different prices, I'm sorry, so your motion was what?
Yes.
To award to the low bidder?
To award the low bidder.
Perfect, is there a second?
I second his motion to award the low bidder.
That's a good motion to second, all right, if there's nothing else, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same say, confused, say aye. Okay, all right, that, so that took care of yours, let's take care of this other one while we're here, just, it's on, it's on that, um. The other is for the appraisal department, and again, we received two bids, one from Donahue and one from JM Jackson. And there, this is a purchase of one or two vehicles.
Two.
Two vehicles as well, and the bid amount is thirty thousand, six fifty-seven, sixty-seven for these two vehicles, that's the low bidder by one thousand dollars. Uh, is there a motion to award that bid to the low bidder JM Jackson?
I made that motion.
There is a motion, was there a second?
There's a second.
Michael, second, if I have a question on that, anything you need to clarify, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say, all right, that, those are awarded, thank you for giving us that, next, no problem, what you got? Uh, surplus of vehicles for the Sheriff's Department.
Also, I'd like to make mention, I've, I've given a list to you guys, uh, as far as the surplus of the vehicles, there could be one more added. We recently had a, a high mileage Tahoe, uh, and this had happened like late yesterday, the transmission has gone out in it, and considering what it's gonna cost to replace that transmission, we just keep band-aiding an old vehicle. So that, that could be added as well, I, I do need to speak with, uh, James, with, uh, with our, our mechanic and see where we are on that. This vehi- this vehicle has a lot of miles on it, I'm not sure if I want to spend the money fixing it, uh, just go ahead and surplus it, but when they just, just see what's wrong with it first.
So we've, so we've been provided with a list, uh, by the Sheriff of eight vehicles that he is proposing we declare surplus from the fleet, and then there are one, two, three seized vehicles, are those handled the same way?
Yes, uh, one of the vehicles that is seized is a vehicle that has been actually sold at auction before. There was a problem with the title, uh, the vehicle I believe is a ninety-six Toyota 4Runner, uh, which is old enough that it can be destroyed without title, and, uh, I suggest that this vehicle be destroyed. And then whatever money comes from the, you know, the scrap metal or whatever would go back to where, wherever it needs to go.
So these are normally disposed of through auction, gov deals or?
That is normally the method that you choose of disposing unless y'all make, uh, and I would recommend that as well, that that one just.
Yeah, we can't, we can't actually sell the vehicle with a title that's missed.
Right, so the proposal is that we declare all of these vehicles on your page six surplus, dispose of them all through auction, govdeals.com with the exception of item number one under seized vehicles, which would be, uh, sell for salvage, scrap price. That's the proposal is, is there a motion to this effect?
I made a motion.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
It's all second.
All right, let's, let's have a discussion on that if you have questions on it, if not, it's pretty routine.
Hey, we got everything pretty well set up for replacements of these vehicles.
We do have two new Tahos that are coming, uh, we're, we're, when we, when we surplus these vehicles, we're gonna act, we're not gonna have a spare. Uh, and, and that's fine, we can get by without it, we'll just have to rotate our deputy's cars. You know, if somebody's car's tore up, he can go get the off-duty deputy's car until it's fixed. Uh, we can do that, it'd be, it'd be nice to have a spare, but with the, with this other vehicle just going down, it's gonna kind of take place of what I have.
That was your spare, was it?
Yeah, well, it was my spare.
So when your two new ones come in, then you'll have two spares at that point?
I'll have two spares, and considering what shape they are, we'll consider surplusing those or, or keeping them, so.
So there is a motion and second, any other questions? All in favor in what, what the proposal is that these be declared and listed immediately on gov deals?
Correct, as soon as we declare them, they're gonna be pulled over there and start dis, we're gonna dis, dismantle the equipment off.
Okay, so with a motion and second, if nothing else, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say, all right, that's, okay, what else?
Uh, yes, consider purchase of vehicle for Sheriff's Department.
Hmm.
Uh, I'd like to buy another one of these chargers with my discretionary funds, they're, uh, they're inexpensive. Uh, this one would come already lighted and everything, uh, it's around eighteen, eight fifty, I have the funds in my discretionary funds. It would, uh, it would give us, I'd be able to replace this vehicle that I'm fixing to have to surplus, uh, and if not, we would at least have a, a spare. So that's, that's why I'd like, this is at no cost to the commission, it's completely out discretionary funds, and that includes travel to and from to pick the vehicle up.
And do, do we want to give approval on the travel, is it an out-of-state purchase?
That, it is an out-of-state purchase, uh.
Where is it?
Uh, Missouri.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the purchase with Sheriff's Department discretionary funds of this vehicle as described? And at the same time approve the travel, uh, out-of-state to pick up, pick up that equipment, and he's covered the cost on it?
I cover the cost.
Purchase and the travel.
There'd be no money out of y'all's.
Okay, I made that motion, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any questions on this?
I'll clear, uh, i- i- if y'all, these vehicles are low mileage vehicles with factory warranty still on them, they have a hundred thousand mile drive train warranty. We're getting these vehicles around fifty to fifty-five thousand miles on them. Uh, we have got one already, it's over, uh, getting the lights and stuff put in it, they're, they're like a brand new vehicle. They're, it's absolutely not a scratch, it's as clean as a pen and, uh.
What's the age on these, how old are they?
Uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Uh, they're, they're usually just a couple of three years old, uh, they're used by Missouri Highway Patrol, they turn them in at fif- between fifty and sixty thousand miles. And, uh, they're, they're gone through, if anything's wrong with them, they fix them, like, if it needs a tie, a set of tires or, or things like that, they fix them and they, they put them out for, uh, government sales.
All right, we do have a motion and second, any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say, all right, that's pretty. Uh, next on the agenda is discussion, discuss location of jail secretary.
Yes.
Several, uh, months ago, we approved, uh, an additional spot, a new spot, uh, on the jail staff. And that was a jail clerk slash secretary, uh, and initially, I believe Sheriff, you, you had somebody internal that and fill that slide and you placed them at the jail.
Correct. Correct, uh, initially we had someone that was a, was already a corrections officer that was interested in becoming a clerk. Uh, this person took the position, uh, we, we had a hard time placing her within the jail to actually keep her mind, or keep her job focused on what she needs to do. Uh, and being that she was already a corrections officer, if something was to go on in the back, shoo, she would go and, and check on it. Uh, having a secretary is, is very important to, for the jail, it doesn't really matter where they work, uh, as long as they can cover the billing cycles of the medical billing, the, the work release, the food funds, all that, as long as that gets done, w- we, we need the secretary. Uh, I don't really have a place to put them out at the jail, uh, that would ensure that, that this person would have the time to, to focus on what she needs to, or he or she needs to do. I do have a place on this side of the road that she can focus on what, I say she, he or she, she's not been hired yet, uh, can focus on what they need to do. I asked that y'all let me, let me have this person work on this side of the street, it's, it's not, i- it just, it would be better if they're able to focus on the billing, uh, we do have a lot of billing, medical billing, and at, at times pri- prior, the medical billing has been, has not been done, and we've started doing that, and we've been getting some of our money back. And, uh, we really need this person to be able to focus on that, because y'all know as well as I do, medical billing is a big thing at the jail, it's one of your number one costs.
It's, it's become a, it's become a more significant factor, for one thing, we're carrying more state inmates because of the COVID limitations. It's, it's become a, it's become a more significant factor, for one thing, we're carrying more state inmates because of the COVID limitations. Those medical bills incurred by state inmates can be passed on to the State Department of Corrections, but to do that, you have to document and be on top of that, and that's become real, real evident, uh, that that was a problem during the COVID nineteen, uh.
It, it, that's correct, and I, I understand that, uh, the state, that all, all the state inmates are covered under Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Uh, and they will take care of emergency room visits, depending, depending on what it is, if they send them to the emergency room for a common cold, we're stuck with that. But if they send them to an emergency room to have an appendix taken out, the, the, the state will take care of that. We want to be able to have this, this clerk to be able to stay right on top of that.
Beside, besides medical billing, what other, what other type of billing?
We also have the, uh, uh, the fee bill, you know, uh, right now, I have a secretary, my main secretary, or my clerk four, who keeps up with it, and she does a good job with it, but this is something that the jail secretary could actually take over and free up my, my clerk four to do other things within this, uh, the, the sheriff's department side.
Who, who coordinates your, uh, court appearances and stuff?
Uh, that's gonna be our jail liaison, we have, uh, we actually have two jail liaisons, it's working out great. Uh, guys are getting to court when they need to, uh, we have a hiccup every once in a while, it's hard to get someone to court in fifteen minutes, but we manage sometimes. Uh, but, uh, that's working out great, we have very few complaints.
Okay, uh, so really, the, the only difference, uh, the question a- and today, not as to whether we add this person, we've approved it. And, and you fill the slide, and it's open right now, you're re-advertising, so the issue at hand is where to locate this person. Uh, and I think originally, uh, it, it just was anticipated that this person would be in the jail.
That's correct, and, uh, there's really, there, there's, there's prisoner access, I say prisoner access, there's access for the prisoners throughout the jail, whether they're going and speaking to the jail liaison, the, uh, jail administrator, uh, some work in the, in the DFAT, the, the dining facility, I say facility, the, the kitchen, and you have trustees all over the place, I need this, this person to be able to focus on what they're doing and, and do, and do it right. It's just not, there's a hard, it's, it'd be very hard for them to focus over there at that jail, even if I had a spot for them, but, uh, I just ask that y'all let them come on this side of the road, do the same job, help us, I think it'd help us out tremendously.
Okay, so you, you, uh, hear the request, what, what are your thoughts, commissioners?
There is absolutely no place over there for this person, because where you, where, where are you planning on putting them on this side of the road?
I have a place up front in my office, or I could move them to the office in front of my office, where we have, uh, uh, we have an investigator in there right now, but she can move back into the investigator's office, I could put her in the investigator's office, I have places to put them. I have one investigator that's now working out of the Sanford substation, uh, so that, that freed up a place. Uh, I have, I have places over here to put them where they can concentrate on their work. And not only they could concentrate on their work, they'll be closer to the, their, 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 their supervisor, which is Ms. Beckworth, to ask questions and ensure that they're doing the right thing, so.
I don't think we want to get into micromanaging, uh, sh- the sheriff's department, uh, and the location of a desk or an employee, I think is, is, should be his decision. I think it just became an issue because of the expectation when we approved this lot, and otherwise, it probably would have never been an issue, but. Anybody else have a question for?
I, I don't, don't think we need to micromanage either, I, I do worry about the fact of moving an employee from it, that is a jail employee back across the road, because I think we're opening a can of worms, that we may have a hard time putting the lid on with other departments. Uh, I, I mean, I, I, I totally understand what you're saying there. Uh, my only thing is I, I do worry about that, you know, other, other employees want to be moved from department to department.
Another issue that came up during, uh, after this all developed, and then you began to look at relocating the person, was, uh, whether this was, this person came in as an at-will employee, as many of yours are, or whether they were under the merit system, and I think the agreement is, Karen, based on your research, that it's a merit, it's a merit slot, a merit slot.
Yes.
By description and by rules, so that issue's off the table, there was some concern about that person thinking, sitting here as, with the other merit employees and thinking they were merit when they were not, but they aren't, so that's another issue.
And I can certainly understand about the moving between departments and everything, but technically, she's still working for the jail side, she's just doing it over here in a much more, uh, easier envi- environment for her to do it in, uh.
Would her specific duties just be the jail, she wouldn't be sharing other things over here?
Just the jail.
She would not be doing other tasks?
I mean, uh, she, she, her specific duties are for the jail, you know, uh, that's, that's what she's here for. Uh, will she answer a telephone, if they call for that secretary, she'll answer that telephone, but her specific duties are for the jail. I have other secretaries that can, that handle the other day-to-day grind, but it's, it's, it's for the jail.
Alright, so you've heard the request, is there a motion to approve the relocation as requested of the jail sec- uh, clerk secretary?
I'm along the lines of Tony on this, let me say that, because I'm afraid it will open up something. Sheriff, is there any way over there you might could find a place to put her, him, her, them?
Not with the facilities that we have at this time.
So if we, if we find a way to expand, uh, capacity in the jail with a new building or something in the future, then you would anticipate moving this person back?
Sure, I mean, we find, we find a way, but I still need to hire the person to get on the job, you know?
I recommend that we approve, uh, him locating this person at, uh, wherever he thinks is best and most effective for the job, so.
As a temporary?
At least temporarily, until we do, until we get additional space or whatever, yeah. Is there a motion?
If we could find a place to put her over there, I'd be more than happy to personally there. But then, when you start moving people over here, then you're gonna have people over here crying and complaining, and it's just gonna snowball, I'm afraid.
Let me ask this here, will you give us to, to the next meeting to make a decision on this, give us an opportunity to talk?
Sure.
Let's see if we can't help you work, maybe work out something, some other.
Maybe they're gonna get a building built between that and the next meeting. I'm just joking. Alright, uh, so no action on that item, um, the next item you have an interest in, Sheriff, it's, uh, board appointments, it's on page seven, commissioners. We have, uh, uh, two terms in, on the Covington County nine-one-one board that are expiring, that'd be, uh, Sheriff Turman's, uh, seat, and also one presently held by Joe Tome, retired state trooper, so commissioners, what are your wishes on these two terms?
As I mentioned to y'all this morning, I'm definitely interested, I'd love to be on the nine-one-one seat, and also Clint Kendall, the CEO of the hospital, has also mentioned interest of sitting on that seat.
I think it's important that the sheriff's office, uh, keep the, the seat that has historically been held by the sheriff, uh.
And I, I wanna stay, I wanna stay.
Because the nine-one-one provides all his dispatch, uh, for City of Antelusia and I, they have their own internal dispatch, and, and nine-one-one transfers to that dispatch. But for him, it's his dispatch department, and, uh, it's worked well, I think it's important he maintain that seat, so, uh, the, the other seat, Joe Tome. You've heard, uh, interest from, uh, Commissioner Smith that he'd be appointed, uh, he communicated that Clint Kendall, Antelusia Regional, Antelusia Health, uh, has expressed interest in serving there, there will be other, uh, expirations, uh, over the next twelve months, I suspect. Probably a couple of those other seats, so we'll have some other opportunities.
Can we split these two up?
Yeah, absolutely.
I make a motion to reappoint the sheriff.
Alright, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions on that, all in favor of that appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, alright, sheriff, reappointed, thank you, and, uh, we will bring the other item back up, Sheriff, on the agenda for the next meeting. And then you have the other seat that is, uh, expiring, and, uh, Mr. Tome's expressed a willingness, interest in being reappointed. Uh, these are non-paying jobs, volunteer, uh, it's a good way to serve the community, and if you have an interest, that's good, there, uh, but you heard the other two interested, uh, parties on this, on the, on the opportunity to serve, whether it's this one or some future appointment, what are your thoughts?
Uh, and look, I certainly appreciate what Joe's done over the years there, and I, with a willingness to serve, it's hard to, you know, hard not to put him back on my. Uh, I also think that when Kyle was here, when Kyle Allen was here, he was on that board as a commissioner, and I feel that it's good to have a commissioner on that board, and as of now, we don't.
Okay.
Um, you know, in lieu of that, I would, uh, ask to appoint Mr. Smith.
Alright, there's a motion to appoint Michael Smith, is there a second on that nomination?
A second.
Alright, somebody want to bring up, uh, a reappointment of, uh, Joe Tome, or, uh, another nomination? If not, we'll just consider this, the nominee, and all in favor of appointing Michael Smith to this term, which will be a four-year term, just as the sheriff says, a four-year term, uh, acknowledge that by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, alright, that appointment is approved, Michael Smith will serve on the nine-one-one board. Uh, staff, Eric, do you have anything to say, Rachel? Commissioners, anything else to bring?
Quarter horse event this weekend.
Karen's got an event at the arena every weekend.
And yourselves, when I talked to some other people yesterday, said went pretty well this last weekend.
Tacking horse though went well, and we have quarter horse event this weekend, uh, followed by the high school rodeo the following weekend, and then junior high rodeo.
The high school rodeo's the state finals.
Yes, it is.
And the junior rodeo is the state finals, so those are big events here in Covington County. Uh, anything else, if all minds are clear, we stand adjourned, thank you.